Good evening, everyone. Calling back to order, Board of Education, Sac City Unified. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, next up, we have our broadcast statement.
This meeting of the Sacramento City Unified School District is recorded. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable, Channel 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be closed captioned and video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replay is Sunday, March 9th at 9:00 a.m. and Monday, March 10th at 12:00 p.m. on Metro Cable, Channel 14. Once posted, the recording of this meeting can be viewed on demand at youtube.com/metrocable14. We welcome members of the audience to address the board. Please complete a speaker form which are located in the back of the room and give them to our communications representative along with any handouts you may have for the board prior to the conclusion of the items presentation. Please speak into the microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments or public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is listed on the agenda, we will ask that you please defer your comments until your item comes up on the agenda. Please also either turn off your cell phones or place them on silent mode.
Thank you, student member, to Griffiths. And moving on to item number 4.3, Member Rhodes with a stellar students' presentation.
Yes, so we have multiple stellar students today. And if we can get all of our stellar students to come up. Round of applause for our stellar students. Parkway in the house. So, super excited, super excited to have Parkway Elementary located in the deep south side of the city. So, always appreciate them coming out. We're going to read a couple of the students. So, we have Juan. Where is Juan? If you can raise your hand when your name is said, Juan. Is Juan is not here? Okay. Cage. Okay, okay. All right, Cage is a dedicated student who always pushes himself to do his best. His empathy, leadership, and humor make him a valued classmate. And now, we have Alexandros. How you doing, Alexandros? I love that name, I love the name, I love the name. Alex is a strong leader who actively participates in discussions and helps his peers understand concepts. His enthusiasm for learning is inspiring. Thank you. And then, we have, if I mess with the name, please forgive me, Kalia. Kalia, close, so close. Kalia in the house. Kalia excels academically and as a leader, as vice president of student government. Vice president of student government. I'm like second vice president. We're like kin. And a step team member, she is a role model in and outside of the classroom. Thank you so much. And then, we have Sophia. Hi, Sophia. So, Sophia is a diligent and respectful student who always follows classroom expectations. She is patient, kind, and a great peer helper. Thank you, Sophia. And then, we have Jaylee. Jaylee, are you here? Jaylee's not here. We have, once again, forgive me if I say the name wrong, Mazamin. Did I say it right? Kinda. Can't tell me how to say it correctly, sir. Mazamin, I appreciate that. Mazamin is a high achieving student and natural leader. His dedication to academics and a strong ethic set him apart. Thank you very much, sir. Then, we have Paku. Yes! Okay, Paku is joyful, respectful, and hardworking student. She remains positive and gives her best effort every day. Thank you so much. And last but not least, and after I say this last one, I need everybody in the crowd to make the most noise you can for these students, okay? So, after I read Avery's, we're going to give a big round of applause for our students at Parkway, okay? So, you guys be prepared for that. I just want the audience to be prepared. Avery is a top scholar with a stellar attitude. His leadership, strong academics, and willingness to help others make him an outstanding student. Can we get a huge round of applause for our stellar students? That's beautiful, guys. Thank you for that. Our students deserve nothing but that. So, right now, we're going to give an opportunity for any students who want to say anything or if the principal or vice principal want to say anything about your award and how you're feeling today.
It's on.
It's on? Thank you for honoring me today. It is a pleasure to come to Parkway, and I am very thankful for the staff at Parkway, and the teachers, and the principal, and the vice principal.
Okay, on behalf of the scholars and all of Parkway, we just would like to thank you for this honor, for honoring our students, our scholars. They are awesome every day. We have more students at Parkway that continue to strive to be their best, and this is just a representation of who we are. So, anytime anyone wants to stop by, please do. We are proud, and we are Parkway proud. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And we're going to also come down, take some photos. Parents, be ready to take some photos. The whole board is going to come down and take photos with you. And I would like to say, having you guys in the space is beautiful, especially coming from the south side. So, for you guys today, a big love and much south side pride. Thank you. Thank you so much again. So, I'm going to get you guys all the photos. And then, the board members are going to come stand with you guys. Is there a way, is there a way that we can get, I want to definitely get all of them around you? Okay.
Should we, are we, should we stay here?
Come around if you guys would like to, yes, please.
Okay.
You guys show your names. Yeah, yeah, yes, yes, yes. You can scoot up here. You want to stand up here? You might be, so. We want everyone to see your name. You can stand up here. There you go. You want to pop in this window right here? You hop in here or something. Somebody hop in. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we got coverage. Okay.
One, two, three, smile. Keep smiling for the parents.
All right.
Congratulations, guys.
All right, moving on to item 5.0, announcements of action taken in closed session. And do we have any announcements?
Good evening, President Singh. There are no announcements this evening.
All right, 6.0, agenda adoption. Do we have a motion to adopt our agenda? Mr. Rhodes, Ms. Ibarra, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Perfect. Moving on to item 7.0, public comments. Hello, Al, how many public comments do we have?
We have 48.
Awesome. Given the fact that we have 48 public comments, for timing purposes, we often do this. If folks could keep their comment to one minute, so we can try to get through all 48 comments. And I love when folks come up here and talk, and I am very generous with not cutting people off, but with 48, what we're going to do is you have a minute. There is a button up here that cuts off your mic. I don't want to use it, but there'll be five seconds of grace time. After that, I will turn the mic off. I still love you all for making your comments. It's just to keep the, keep the night moving. So, let's start.
First speaker, Katie Burns, followed by Jake Newmeyer, and then Eve Bannas.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Allen, and community members. My name is Katie Burns, and I am the Community School Specialist at John Still TK8. I am here to advocate for continued support for our Student Support Center, a critical resource for our students. John Still serves students with diverse and complex needs. Many of our students face significant trauma that impacts their ability to focus on school. We know from Maslow's hierarchy of needs that students cannot reach their full potential unless their basic needs such as safety, emotional well-being, and stability are met first. This is exactly what the John Still Student Support Center provides every day. Michelle Weaver and Jessica Gonzalez, our coordinator and social worker, offer both, offer both in-the-moment interventions and long-term supports, ensuring that our students have access to mental health services, conflict resolution, social-emotional learning, and essential resources like food, clothing, and school supplies. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Singh, I accept your challenge to keep it under a minute, so we will do that. Thank you guys all for, for what you do. I did just want to express a short and small comment, something to think about for you guys. The agenda item that I was focused on actually got pulled from this meeting, so it's, it's no longer here, and that's not actually what I'm here for. There was a lady from the school that came down in the February meeting, Cassandra Tillman. And Ms. Tillman is a, is a great support individual at our school. And if she's going to take time out of her day to come here and advocate for our students, I'm going to show up as well and advocate for them. What I'm specifically talking about is asking the board to consider having a better notification process to track board items and that sort of thing, so that people can either lock into a school or a topic, and if things come up or things get moved around, they don't have to scramble the last minute to try to chase it down and, and get people together. Simple step, those things exist, they all out in the universe. It's not a, it's not a large ask, okay? Under a minute, there we go. Thank you, guys.
Eve Bannas, followed by Melissa Sandberg, and then Shawna Prasad.
Hi, good evening. My name is Eve Bannas, and I'm the advocacy and training lead at the Sacramento LGBT Community Center. I'm here tonight to voice concern regarding the intended job and programming cuts that will impact students throughout the district. The LGBT Center works to create a region where all LGBTQ+ people thrive. At the center, we work with LGBTQ+ people every day, providing mental health resources, housing, health services, and we're really grateful to have worked closely with the district on many events to support LGBTQ+ students. The district's LGBTQ+ Support Services Team in particular has been one of our trusted partners. Cutting staff from your student support and health services will impact some of your most vulnerable students in the district. Protecting and providing resources for these young people needs to be a top priority, and by cutting the staff and services that your LGBTQ+ students rely on, you remove potentially life-saving supports. We're living in a scary time right now, and LGBTQ+ youth are very, pardon me, are very aware of the attacks targeting them, whether that's the anti-trans executive orders or violence in the community. Protect the students.
Thank you.
Melissa Sandberg. Melissa Sandberg has two speakers yielding their time for a total of three minutes.
Good evening, board members. My name is Melissa Sandberg, and I'm a college and career counselor at Rosemont High School. I'm currently working in one of the counseling positions that are expected to be pink slipped on March 15th. I'm wanting to speak with the board of the current staffing cuts being proposed by the district. Based off the February 20th board meeting, there are over 20 student support positions that are being expected to end. These positions are college and career counselors, those certificated counseling five positions, and mental health specialists. We are certificated and classified employees that are not, that are placed at each school site. We report to school campuses daily, and I think this information was not clearly displayed by our district with the cuts proposed. I will have worked as a college and career counselor at Rosemont for three years on March 14th. There is one college and career counselor at every comprehensive high school. We serve all students on campus and do not have a direct caseload because of this. In the last three years, I've seen how important these counseling positions and support positions are. I know myself and my counterparts have worked tirelessly to raise graduation and college-going rates, and at the very least, work hard to maintain them. We constantly monitor and evaluate how our duties support our site's SIPSA and LCAP goals, which I do have packets if you're interested. While our position is focused on college and career, we are supporting the whole school environment with their academics, such as master scheduling and working on matching student schedules that align with college and career expectations. We support student social and emotional needs and support when there's school crisis. I would like to ask the board to visualize their cuts proposed at this site level, as Rosemont currently has 5.5 FTE counselors, including myself, one FTE social worker, and one FTE school supports coordinator, totaling 7.5 supports. With the district's proposed cuts, Rosemont would go down to four FTE counselors and one FTE social worker, and that's a third of our student support site being cut. The counselors that remain will be inundated with social-emotional needs, academic needs, and college and career supports. This is where the remaining counselors will have to pick what supports are pushed to the back due to overwhelming need. It's difficult to do counseling prevention when you're constantly overwhelmed with reactive tasks. SUSD students' needs have not gone down. If anything, they've increased over the years. Our student population has slowly decreased, but our student needs remain really high. I would like to question what the plan is. Once all of these supports are cut, how is the district going to support the counselors and the social workers that remain? How are the counselors going to be able to pick up all these duties on top of their already full-time schedules? And doesn't this all seem like too much, too fast, and not the best course of action for our students? I know these cuts need to be made, but I'm hoping that we continue to focus on what's best for the students overall. I thank you for your time and your support.
Shawna Prasad.
Good evening, board members, superintendent, and committee members. My name is Shawna Prasad, and I'm one of the college and career counselors at John F. Kennedy High School, Title I comprehensive high school. I am here tonight to emphasize the central roles that college and career counselors play in guiding our students, especially seniors, through life-changing post-secondary decisions. Each year, we support hundreds of students in career exploration, college applications, and financial aid. Last year alone, 31% of students applying to Sacramento State were from John F. Kennedy. 58% of students applying to Sacramento City College received direct, on-campus support with orientation and educational planning. This excludes students who apply to other four-year institutions, community colleges, trade schools, or any other educational or career programs. 68% of seniors successfully submitted their financial aid applications, meeting California's AB 469 requirement by the end of last year. These achievements were possible only through the direct support provided by college and career counselors. Without us, these responsibilities would have fallen on our overburdened academic counselors, leaving many students, particularly first generation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christopher Qualam, followed by Monica Cervantes and David Ibarra.
Hello, board members. I actually wasn't sure if this is what I could do this for. I actually had a question. I'm a student journalist over at Sac State, and I was just, I'm writing a story about the expanded learning programs that, you know, all that districts are getting, and I just kind of was kind of find out, like, what do those programs look like for you guys at the respective schools that you are a part of and attached to? So, I wasn't sure if this was the appropriate way to ask this question, but.
So, we can't respond up here? But if you can talk to Al, who's on our comms team, and Al, if you can relay that, the question to us through email.
All right, thank you so much. I'm so sorry.
You're good, thank you.
Monica Cervantes, followed by Davina Ibarra, and then Marley Fatucalla.
Hello, my name is Monica Cervantes, and I'm here today to express my deep concern regarding the recent decisions to eliminate key positions within our schools. As a parent, I have been firsthand in the valuable role that Ms. Michelle and Ms. Jessica play in fostering a safe, supportive, and high-quality learning environment for our students. Ms. Michelle and Ms. Jessica are critical to the success of our school and play, provide an academic support, emotional guidance, and enrichment opportunities that directly impact our students' well-being and achievement. Removing these positions, excuse me, not only increases the burden on the remaining staff, but also diminishes the quality of education and resources available to our children. Ms. Michelle and Ms. Jessica have helped my family directly during very traumatic experiences, and we hope that they will be able to remain in our school.
Hi, my name is Davina Ibarra. I am from John Still Elementary, and I am here today because I was informed that Ms. Michelle's position in the Student Support Center may be taken away, and we won't have anybody to help us solve our problems. And if I have issues with other students, I can go to Ms. Michelle, and she has helped me with conflict resolution. She also meets with me weekly to follow up and see how I'm doing. So, please don't take away her position, because students like me won't have anyone to talk to if we have issues, and that is why we need Ms. Michelle in our school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Marley Fatucalla, with one speaker yielding their time for a total of two minutes, followed by Maria Ng and Najia Worthington.
Hello, everyone. My name is Marley Fatucalla, and I attend John Still Elementary. From the moment I met Ms. Michelle, my student support coordinator, she has always been a person I could talk to. She has really been there for me through a lot of my rough times, not only for me, but my, but also my family. Not only the rough times has she been there, but she's just a caring person all around. We really need more people like Ms. Michelle. Thank you, Ms. Michelle, for being my go-to.
Thank you.
Mariah Ng, followed by Najia Worthington, and then Caroline Yang.
My name is Najia. I'm an eighth grader at John Still. I feel like having a support center should be important in schools, because most kids my age are not comfortable speaking with their parents. So, it's very important for us to have someone we're comfortable with to speak with. And I had a family emergency when Ms. Michelle, when I had a family emergency, Ms. Michelle was there when I needed her and supported me through the whole thing.
Hi, my name is Caroline, and I'm an eighth grader at John Still. The support center is important because they help students with problems they struggle with. Another reason why I think it's important is because I can speak freely without judgment. When I talk with Ms. Michelle, I get things off my chest and makes my day better. If the school didn't have a coordinator, people, people would struggle, oh, wait, people who struggle in school won't get the help they need, and Ms. Michelle has helped me a lot throughout these years.
Hi, my name is Mariah Ng. I'm Caroline's aunt. I want to take a moment to talk about someone truly remarkable who has made an incredible difference in my niece's Caroline's life, our wonderful school counselor, Ms. Michelle, as a specialist too in mental health. Ms. Michelle has shown what it means to be a dedicated, compassionate, and reliable presence in the lives of the students she serves. Over the course of time, my niece has worked with Ms. Michelle. I have seen firsthand the positive impact she's had on Caroline. As a family member, it has sometimes been challenging when you're not able to be with your child at all times, especially during difficult moments. I've always wanted to be there for Caroline, guiding her through the challenges she faces, but there are moments when I can't be at school with her. Knowing that Ms. Michelle is there has provided me with such a sense of relief. Caroline now has someone to turn to when she needs help, guidance, or just someone to talk to. Ms. Michelle's support has gone beyond just helping Caroline academically. She has been a steady source of emotional guidance, helping Caroline navigate difficult situations at school, and empowering her to overcome obstacles with confidence. The level of care, patience, and, understanding Ms. Michelle provides has allowed Caroline to feel more secure and supported. And as her aunt, it's been an immense comfort to know that there's another strong, caring woman in Caroline's corner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Leroy Skoggins, followed by John Garcia, and then Amanda Lamont.
Hi, my name is Leroy Skoggins. I'm Najia's mother. I'm here in support of Michelle and John Still Support Center. I'm just keeping it short. We need the support center, especially Michelle. My kids especially have faced so much. A lot of things, we've been homeless. I was in a DV situation. We moved, and once I got to John Still, before I got to John Still, I felt alone as a single mother of four. And when I got to John Still and my kids got in connection with the support center, I did not feel alone. After losing my nephew, two months later, my, my house, we was in a house fire. When I tell you, Michelle and the support center was the reason my kids stayed in school. And even when I couldn't get them to school, they did everything in their power, drove to each and every address that I was at to be there for my kids and to, and education and stability is so important to me, and without them, my kids would have had to switch schools or miss so much school. And we need Michelle. We need the support center. It's very, very important to mothers like me and to children like my kids and my daughter's best friend. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Garcia, followed by Amanda Lamont, and then Adriana Martinez.
Hello, everybody. My name is John Garcia. I'm the Director of Youth and Family Programs at the Sacramento LGBT Community Center. I'm also a former educator myself. I worked in middle school, in a middle school, for seven years, and I wanted to speak to the proposed cuts for the Support and Health Services Department. A big reason why I'm no longer a teacher is I did not feel in my role that there was enough support for the students, and there's nothing more demoralizing to a new, young teacher, excited, moving into the role, to feel that your district does not support the students, that is, not putting the effort needed to support especially the most vulnerable of our students. Having worked with the LGBT Task Force and hearing all the wonderful narratives from the parents and students who've been up here, I think if I worked in this Sac district, maybe I'd still be a teacher today. So, to hear that these positions would be lost would be a critical loss for both students, but also prospective teachers who may not last too long. but also prospective teachers who may not last too long if they feel like their students are not supported.
Thank you.
Amanda Lamont, followed by Adriana Martinez, and then Nia Collins.
Hi, my name is Amanda Lemon. I'm a school nurse at John Still. I'm here to talk about the cuts for our student support. I'm asking you to please reconsider eliminating these positions for the sake of our students. Michelle Weaver and Jessica Gonzalez work incredibly hard for John Still students and families to make sure they receive the resources they need to succeed at school. They have close relationships with some of the most vulnerable students at our school and provide a safe space to support them through challenging times. For some students, Ms. Michelle or Ms. Jessica is their trusted adult, their safe person to turn to. Having them at John Still means our students are kept safe and feel supported, something they need in order to succeed at our school. Michelle's presence is not only essential to our students, we rely on her for so many things, from leading cost meetings every week to ensure the support staff at John Still are aware of the students that are struggling and need additional services, planning school assemblies to enrich the students' learning, and most recently coordinating the dental screening event at our school to ensure that our kids are healthy and receive the care they need. These are just a few things that she does at our school.
Thank you.
My name is Adriana Martinez, and I'm a school social worker at Hiram Johnson High School. This is my third academic year in this role. Our Student Support Center Coordinator has been in her position for twenty-three and a half years. She has put a lot of work in establishing the Student Support Center over those years. So to learn that a position so crucial to our campus community will be cut is very concerning, not only because it will impact the direct care I provide to students, such as ongoing mental health counseling and case management, but I am mostly worried about not being able to provide the social-emotional supports that our students need, such as alcohol and drug prevention, education, fentanyl awareness assemblies, suicide prevention, and other Tier One and Two supports that decrease the needs for Tier Three. Cutting our advocate and coordinator positions will mean that I will be the only one at my site responding to the mental health needs of our students at such a high-need site. This means most of my time will be spent putting out fires due to crises, which at my site happens very often, because it's a comprehensive high school. We need our team to stay like it is, which consists of our coordinator, mental health advocate, and school social workers. So I'm asking to please support this model.
Thank you.
Nia Collins, followed by Sherdon Perryman, and then Sarah Morgan.
Hi, my name is Nia Collins. I'm eighteen years old, and I'm a senior at Hiram Johnson. I've been here, I was here tonight to tell you about the impact that the Student Support Center staff has had on my life. I moved to Sacramento from Southern California last summer to escape an abusive household. I am by myself, I was by myself and alone for the first time in my life. The first time I stepped into the support center, I was upset, scared, and not an easy person to get along with. But that didn't stop Ms. Mary, who is the coordinator that listened to me and talked about my problems and figured out how to solve them. Together, we identified school and community resources to help me access public assistance, medical insurance, mental health services, and resolve financial support matters. I learned how to make my first doctor's appointment. I learned how to advocate for my needs and with my family and at school. I have a new 504 accommodation plan. I'm in therapy. I have grown a sense of independence and self-confidence in myself that I didn't have before I met Ms. Mary.
Thank you.
Sherdon Perryman. Sherdon Perryman has two people yielding their time for a total of three minutes.
Good evening, school board members and Superintendent Allen. My name is Sherdon Perryman, and I serve as a Specialist Two Mental Health at Albert Einstein Middle School at the support center, and this is my fourth school year in this role. My colleagues and I are here tonight to advocate for the thousands of students and their families in our district that would not be served at our highest-need school next year because of the layoffs of Specialist Two Mental Health Coordinator One and Youth and Family Mental Health Advocates at the support centers. We are encouraged, we are encouraged that funding has been identified for two FTE Mental Health Coordinator Ones at the district and six FTE Mental Health Specialist Twos at the school sites for next year. For the mental health specialists, that would mean that there would be four FTE positions serving at three Title One elementary schools each, and two FTE positions serving at two middle schools that have restricted grant funds for those support centers. We remain extremely concerned that specialists and coordinator mental health layoffs remain in place for all five large comprehensive high schools and six high-need middle schools. Adolescents tend to have some of the most complex needs that, I'm sorry, have the most complex needs. They are at high risk for substance abuse, depression, anxiety, mood disorders, behavior disorders, dating violence, sexual assault, community violence, and notably suicide is the largest leading cause of death for young people aged fifteen to twenty-four. Gender and sexual identity, reproductive health issues, and planning for graduation are so important, I'm sorry, and beyond are most important in the developmental issues for our teens to explore. It is unthinkable that services for teens will decrease in Sac City School District at the time where students need the most support to navigate through their life's challenges. Unfortunately, we find ourselves excluded from these discussions that pertain to student support centers, because our positions are classified as non-represented management. While district leaders meet with labor partners about the impact of these layoffs, we feel voiceless in this process. We come before you tonight to inform you about the critical work we do and the significant impact we have on the students and families that we serve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Morgan, for a total of three minutes.
Good evening, Superintendent Allen, board members. My name is Julie Kaufman. I am a Coordinator One Mental Health, and I am proudly serving in my twenty-fourth year with this district in a combined role of Student Support Center Coordinator, Intern Program Coordinator, and currently as a Regional Support. Mental, what do we do at our school sites? Mental health specialists and learning support coordinators directly serve twenty-one school sites across the district, including elementary, middle, and high schools. In two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, Student Support Centers served four thousand seven hundred seventy-five students with targeted Tier Two services such as social-emotional support, mentoring, basic needs assistance, support groups, conflict resolution, participation in IEPs, SSTs, 504s, attendance intervention meetings, and supportive assistance for parents and guardians. Nearly three thousand students received intensive Tier Three services last year, including crisis intervention, mental health services, suicide risk assessments, home visits, child welfare assistance, homeless supports, and substance use and counseling referrals. We partner with school administrators and staff to create multi-tiered systems of support, including facilitating coordination of services teams, meetings to triage student referrals, joining in school-wide initiatives like attendance interventions, suicide prevention education, substance use prevention education, sexual harassment prevention programs, providing newcomer transition assistance, and PBIS support. As an example, many of our support centers recently brought in local immigration organizations to educate students and their families about their legal rights, and they are offering support groups now for students who are worried about the new federal immigration policies. We develop and coordinate partnerships with community organizations to provide free school and community-based services for our students and families. Rose Family Creative Empowerment, Black Child Legacy Campaign, WE, UC Davis Care Center, La Familia Counseling Center, Sacramento Children's Home, Meadowview-Pennell Community Center, Berth and Beyond, and Sacramento Food Bank are just a few of the organizations that we have partnered with. Our department, over the years, has partnered with more than one hundred different organizations and agencies to support our school communities. Thank you for your time.
My name is Sarah Morgan, and I'm the Specialist Mental Health at Rosemont High School. I have been with Rosemont for three school years. So we also coordinate school-wide activities that foster a sense of community, safety, and well-being on our campuses. In the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, just under thirty-five thousand students participated in Tier One activities across the district last year, coordinated primarily by mental health specialists and coordinators with the invaluable assistance of youth and family health and LGBTQ-plus advocates and social workers. For example, Fern Bacon's SSC Coordinator partnered with Civic Thread in the twenty-three, twenty-four year to host several Safe Walk/Bike to School events. The most memorable was Ruby Bridges' Walk to School Day, as it provided a learning opportunity for students about anti-racism, anti-bullying, and racial justice, as well as promoting safe walking and biking to school with walking maps and helmets and bike lock distributions. Student Support Center staff also respond to mental health and behavioral crises as they arise, ensuring that students and staff receive immediate and appropriate support. Last year, nine hundred and ninety-two students received crisis intervention counseling, five hundred and thirty-six suicide risk assessments were completed, and nearly one thousand two hundred and how students received assistance. For example, several years ago, when the Hiram Johnson community experienced the shocking, tragic death of two students to fentanyl poisoning and nearly lost a third, the Support Center Coordinator led the school's mental health crisis team effort to comfort grieving students and parents and brought professional experts in the field to educate staff, students, and caregivers about the dangers of fentanyl. Hiram Johnson has continued educating students every year on the dangers of fentanyl poisoning in hopes that lives will be saved. Thank you.
My name is Sarah Martinez. I am the Specialist Two Mental Health at Abraham Lincoln Elementary Student Support Center, and this is my third school year in this position. So I'm here to speak about who we are. We are dedicated professionals with expertise in mental health, trauma, and the school-based case management. We are strengths-based and collaborative in our work. We embrace the district principles of equity, access, and social justice for all, but particularly for marginalized youth and their families. Most of us hold the same PPS, Pupil Personnel Services credential, in school social work, as our counterparts, but we have been hired under different titles to develop and coordinate services at student support centers at high-needs K through twelve schools. Our longest-serving team members have been in their roles for twenty-four to twenty-six years, and the average years of service across our team is eight years. These long tenures speak to our dedication, experience, and expertise in supporting the needs of our schools. We are deeply integrated into the inner workings of each site, providing ongoing support for at-risk students and their families. While the district is in the process of developing a robust MTSS program for academic instruction for twenty-five, twenty-six school year, it does not make sense to lay off effective, highly experienced mental health specialists and coordinators who, along with the school's social workers and mental health advocates, directly serve the social, emotional, mental health, and basic needs of students. Why would the district decimate school sites' capacity to provide Tier Two and Three interventions for students who are experiencing barriers to learning? School social workers alone will not be able to meet student and family demand for services at school sites. The majority of their time will be spent on responding to crises, and many other students and families will go underserved. Thank you.
My name is Emily Herr. I'm the Specialist Two of Mental Health at Woodbine Elementary Student Support Center. I've served there for five years. Prior to that, I served at Elder Creek for two years. Prior to that, I was the district's first LGBTQ Youth and Family Mental Health Advocate for five years. In terms of the impact of our work, we have data-driven results. We understand the importance of accountability and data in demonstrating the effectiveness of our work. Our team utilizes an MTSS framework to analyze data from the Early Identification and Intervention System, EIIS, to monitor the success of our interventions and to track outcomes. The data speaks for itself. Our programs and initiatives have led to improved attendance rates, reduced behavioral issues, and increased academic performance for the students that we serve. For example, at Rosemont High School, where Student Support Center staff provided targeted mental health support services, there was a twenty percent reduction in student behavioral incidents over the past year. Similarly, at Caesar Chavez Elementary, Student Support Center staff interventions have led to a fifteen percent increase in student attendance, directly correlating with improved academic outcomes. We serve many of the district's most vulnerable students, who rely on the specialized mental health services that we provide. The elimination of our positions would leave these schools without critical mental health supports, exacerbating existing challenges such as behavioral issues, poor attendance, and disengagement from school. Without these roles, many of our students and their families will face increased barriers to success. Thank you.
My name is Michelle Weaver. I'm the Specialist Two Mental Health at John Still TK Through Eight Student Support Center. This is my fourth year in this position. So the way forward, we recognize the difficult decisions facing the board, but we urge you to consider the far-reaching impact that eliminating these positions will have on our students, our school communities, and the district as a whole. We ask that you preserve all of the Mental Health Specialist Two Coordinator One and Youth Mental Health Advocate positions, as these roles are vital to the well-being and success of our students. By doing so, you are investing in the future of our students and ensuring that they have the support they need to thrive both in and out of the classroom. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Allen. My name is Shanice Hendricks. I'm currently the Coordinator One of our LGBTQ Support Services Program, as well as our West Region Student Support Centers. Since two thousand eleven, the LGBTQ Support Services Program has been dedicated to addressing the challenges faced by queer and transgender students on our school campuses. Through our work, we have been able to make a significant impact on improving academic attendance, graduation outcomes for our LGBTQ-plus students, fostering inclusive school cultures and providing critical supports to both students and staff. Our program's focus is to improve LGBTQ support students' outcomes for fostering inclusive schools and classroom cultures that affirm their identities, increasing access to gender-affirming and gender-neutral spaces, including restrooms, locker rooms, sports teams across our district, building communities through school-wide events, Gender Sexuality Alliance Clubs, youth conferences, and workshops, and providing education and advocacy regarding district policy, state laws, and student rights. What did this look like in action? We have provided with, when four full-time staff was dedicated to this program, we were able to provide forty-two Safe Zone trainings to our district teachers, extended learning providers, and department staffs throughout the district. Twenty-two active GSAs are currently active in alignment with one of our resolutions to make sure that our secondary schools have GSAs, and we support them with workshops, supplies, activities, et cetera. Facilitating site-based clubs that struggle with having and identifying an advisor for their GSAs, we have gone out to get those starters and do those warm handoffs for those school sites, so our students have that safe environment on their campuses. We also table at back-to-school night, school-wide events to show our community, our parents, our students, that this is a safe district for them, and there's a place for them at all of our schools. In addition to that, we have also provided one hundred and thirty-nine naming gender marker updates, and a total of four hundred and forty-two since our program's inception. I am proud to have, that our district has one of the most robust transgender and non-gender conforming student board policies that really highlights and promotes the needs of our students, and so it is very impactful that we are here with these layoffs that have been approved last meeting. These accomplishments were made possible by having these full-time staff dedicated to the program to serve the whole district. That's four staff members for the entire district. However, with the recent approval of those layoffs, our team will be reduced from three to just one individual, which it will not be a program anymore, with just one person. This will drastically diminish our ability to continue the vital supports and drastically minimize the impact that we can have district. minimize the impact that we can have district-wide. I pose this question to the board: How will the district accomplish the LCAP goal number three, which focuses on creating safe environments? The needs of our students are currently increasing because of the climate of all the executive orders that are getting put out. The political climate is so impactful to our families. I'm getting calls from parents when we're meeting with students, that's the first thing out of their minds and off their mouths of what is our district doing, and is it still safe? Do we still have our rights? So, we urge you to reconsider the cuts to our team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Kahn-Ausenford for two minutes, followed by Annalee Ridgeway, and then Jamie
Hello. I am a third-grade teacher at Parkway Elementary, and I want to share the positive and important impact our Student Support Center has on our students and their communities. Every day, I have students asking to check in with the Student Support Center, or I have to refer students for support with anything from emotional regulation, conflict resolution, food insecurity, and suicide risk assessments. I wanted to share I had my class and other classes write letters about what the Student Support Center means to them, so I'm going to read a couple. "The Student Support Center is helpful when I'm sad or mad. It can help me and my friends. They are important because they help me feel safe. I know I can go there when I'm having a bad day or a sad day." "The Student Support Center is very loved by the school every day. They are important because I know where to go when I need help. In the end, the Student Support Center is the best place to go when you need help." Another student wrote, "The Student Support Center is important to our school. They are important because they help me grow. For example, they teach me new calming strategies." And then, another student wrote, "The Student Support Center is important to our school because they help me feel safe. For example, I know I can go there when I'm having a bad time. They help me by calming down, and if I'm ever mad, I can go there, or if I'm feeling sad, I can go there. It helps me when I'm feeling down. It helps me a lot." At Parkway, our Student Support Center is an anchor. It is vital to have our coordinator and social worker to effectively meet the needs at our school. Every day, I have students asking to go. I've lost count of how many students have referred for suicide risk assessments this year. They just, it's very important for our school, and they can't, even their course load right now with two full-time is too much. Just one wouldn't be enough, so I hope you guys can reconsider and find a way to help us fund our Student Support Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Annalee Ridgeway, followed by Jamie Bateman, and then Susan Rupert.
I'm Annalee Ridgeway, and I go to Parkway Elementary School. I'm here about the Student Support Center. Thank you so much for Ms. Monica and Mr. Williams. Without them, I, my problems would have been worse, and they've helped me so much, like when Ms. Monica helped me, talked to me, and really got me digging deep into my heart. Thank you so much for Ms. Monica and Mr. Williams, because without them, I don't think we could be a community.
Jamie Bateman, followed by Susan Rupert.
Hello. My name is Jamie Bateman. I currently serve as a Coordinator for Mental Health, supporting social workers at the school district, and I just got my 10-year anniversary. Thanks for the card. And I've served as a Specialist Two at Parkway Elementary, Elder Creek Elementary, and Cal Middle School. So, I just wanted to draw your attention to these signs that we created. They directly reflect the goals that the Black Parallel School Board, as well as the Sac City Unified School District, have agreed to, and I just wanted to point out some of the data points. So, starting with Goal One, reducing disciplinary, excuse me, reducing disciplinary disproportionality. Forty-one point eight percent of case-managed students reported improvement in behavior concerns at school. So, those are students that we're directly serving with our model. It's already working. Let's keep using it. Anyways, these are the data points. We'd love to send it to you, and just, you know, if you can see some of the numbers, the numbers don't lie. This is data from 23-24, and we really believe in this work. More than just a position, it's a model, and it works. So, please see that. Please believe in it with us. Yeah, thank you.
Susan Rupert, followed by Jessica Gonzalez, and finally Sarah Michael Gaston.
Hi, good evening. My name is Susan Rupert, and I have been a teacher at Hiram Johnson High School for 14 years. I'm currently the Community School Specialist, and in the 14 years that I've been there, the number of times I have had to reach out to Mary Struce, our Student Support Center Coordinator, to support me in supporting my students is more than I can count. In addition to that, as a member of our School Site Council, and in previous years, committee overseeing our school improvement grant, I have watched our Student Support Center Coordinator do everything in her power to keep that center staffed fully with the services that our students need. Unfortunately, the timeline that this is happening at, and the fact that we don't have a district grant writer anymore, doesn't allow those same avenues to allow us to keep them in place. And so, I really think the timeline, at the very least, needs to be reconsidered so that we can find other options for funding.
Jessica Gonzalez, with one speaker yielding their time for a total of two minutes.
Hello. My name is Jessica Gonzalez. I'm a school social worker currently serving at John Still TK-8 and Fern Bacon Middle School. I have served in this role for eight years. I'm here today to speak in support of my colleagues, whose positions are among the preliminary layoffs discussed at the previous board meeting. As educators, we share a big responsibility to our families, children, and families. SCUSD's core value states, "We recognize that our system is inequitable by design, and we vigilantly work to confront and interrupt inequities that exist to level the playing field and provide opportunities for everyone to learn, grow, and reach their greatness." How can we live up to this value when we are actively trying to eliminate key positions in the Student Support and Health Services Department? Students nationwide are facing challenges and historical events that are significantly influencing their development and who they are at their core. As educators, we not only hold the responsibility of teaching our students how to read and write, or how to add and subtract, but we also hold the responsibility of teaching students how to be decent and productive human beings. It is widely recognized that it takes a village to raise a child, and Student Support and Health Services has been a part of this SCUSD village for quite some time. Coordinators help shape and build the department that exists today. Without the coordinator role, it would be virtually impossible for social workers to meet the needs of our students and families district-wide. Coordinators play an important and critical role in our district's MTSS model, leading coordination of services team meetings, which directly address the Tier Two and Three of our students and families. Through cost and extensive efforts, coordinators make in leading these meetings. They help address attendance concerns, peer relationship challenges, and everything else our department has shared today. Additionally, coordinators assist in supervising social work interns and have trained many of the school's social workers working in our department today, including myself. As a school social worker, it would be virtually impossible to do my job without the support and leadership of coordinators. The recommended school social worker to student ratio is 1 to 250. Currently, I am 1 to 1346 between my two sites.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Final speaker, Sarah Michael Gaston.
Good evening, Sac City Board of Education members. My name is Sarah Michael Gaston, and I'm with the nonprofit organization Youth Forward. We are dedicated to improving the health, education, and well-being of our most vulnerable children and youth in Sacramento. Youth Forward currently provides a peer-mentor mental health lunchtime program in three high schools within this district. I'm speaking today to ask that you not cut the 23 student-facing positions in the district's Student Support and Health Services Department. Laying off this staff would be devastating for students, their families, and the community at large. Most, if not all, of these positions are held by individuals in the LGBTQ Support Services Program, the Homeless Services Education Office, and the Student Support Centers on campuses across the district. Each of these services greatly support the students in your trustee areas. Without these programs, positions, schools, and students would greatly suffer. Youth Forward urges you to retain the staff in the Student Support and Health Services Department, as they are essential to school communities, and commit funding for them. Thank you for your time.
No more speakers.
All right. Thank you, everyone, who took the time to give public comment and try to make it work in a minute. I appreciate you. Moving on to Item 8.0, Consent Agenda. Moved by Mr. Rhodes, a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Navarro. Can we have a roll call? We'll start with student member.
Member Jean. Yes. Member Kayata. Member Benjamin.
Aye.
Member Navarro.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Singh.
Aye.
Member Ivara.
Aye.
All right. Thank you so much. Moving on to Item 9.0, Communications. We'll start with our Employee Organization Reports. First up, we have SCTA.
Good evening, members of the Board. Board President Singh and Superintendent Allen, and Nikki Milewski, President of the Sacramento City Teachers Association. Two weeks ago, I stood before you and brought to your attention the need for the Board to take more deliberate steps to reorganize the district's budget, to ensure that the district's resources are spent providing direct services to students rather than on administrators that work at the CERNET Center. Unfortunately, tonight's board agenda demonstrates that no steps have been taken yet to address those concerns. A few numbers tell the whole story. Ten years ago, when the district's enrollment was 43,000 students, over 7,000 higher than it is today, the district had 190 administrators. In 2019, that number swelled to 265.9 FTE of administrative positions. Today, there are 386.2 administrative FTEs, an increase of 45.3% just since 2019. In that same period, the enrollment of our students here in Sac City has dropped by 4,000 students. So, what does that say about our district's values over the last five years? When the district enrollment drops by more than 10%, and the number of administrators increases by over 45%, we have heard that the district budget needs to be rightsized. So far, rightsizing has meant the approval of a large number of cuts among certificated and classified staff, with a slight decrease among administrators. District staff will respond that the board approved of cutting over 50 administrative positions, but looking more closely at this, of those positions that were reduced, 23.5 were unfilled vacancies. Of the remaining 33 administrative positions, 22 of those positions are administrative staff who inappropriately used to do the work of certificated staff represented by SCTA. At the end of the day, taking into account the limited number of administrative cuts, the CERNET Center has been largely left untouched, and we are nowhere close to reducing back to the 2019-level number of administrators, when the district had over 4,000 more students. The district's lack of action on this front is saying to us and to the community that the district budget is already rightsized and needs no additional reprioritizing. Just as importantly, it's also saying that you, as a board, support cuts to those who provide direct services to students before cutting CERNET Center-based administrators. The cuts already approved for certificated and classified staff also contradict the stated board priority to avoid direct cuts to services to students. For example, the LCAP identifies as one of its top priorities is providing college and career readiness counseling to students, and yet the district is proposing to actually lay off at least five counselors. We have asked the district to identify the schools where the cuts are occurring and to explain who will be doing the work with five fewer counselors, and to date, no one has been able to answer those questions. Shouldn't that be known before the board was asked to approve those cuts? Think about that. Do you want to be known as the board that put administrators in head of those that provide direct services to students? Fortunately, you still have time to act. To us, returning to the number of administrators at or below the 2019 level seems like a good place to start. By taking preliminary action, you can give yourselves the flexibility to work with us to figure out the long-term solutions to the district's financial outlook. Thank you for your time tonight.
Teamsters. All right, moving on to our district advisory committees. We'll start with Student Advisory Council.
Good evening, Lisa Allen and the Board. Can I address you to give you a paper? Thank you. My name is Charles Bolton. I serve in two different roles. I'm a teacher with the district, special education teacher, but tonight, I am representing the CAC, where I serve as Vice Chair. Last week, maybe two weeks ago, we had our Ass Sped Event. This was a great event in which we brought out families to Luther Birmingham. I'll wait. I'm just waiting. Please stop my time, waiting for everybody to pay attention. You don't have to read it now. I'm going to engendize this. Thank you. Are you ready? Okay. So, yes, we had our Ass Sped Event, in which we had many families attend Luther Birmingham High School, as well as a bunch of our special education providers and administrators. This was a great event because families got to sit next to the people serving their students. Not only that, they got to ask questions that aren't always answered and communicated in a timely fashion. Unfortunately, I did not see any of you there. To me, it shows a lack of a priority for special education, as this took a lot of hard work to put on. I would ask that you all continue to show up to our events to show that special education is important. As a parent, I've provided you all with a document that the CAC came up with for you to read over and understand that the cuts are important to us that are happening, layoffs that are important, and we want to be a collaborative partner when this comes up. Black Parallel School Board has made it known that our partnership is wanted and needed, and I have not felt that, because we were not aware of different cuts in special education. No one consulted us or anything. We would like to be a part of these conversations to make sure that our students, who are typically the students that may not think about college or go to college, unfortunately, we want to make sure that programs like Workability are available for them. We want to make sure that they are a priority for the board, because they're a priority for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have the District English Learner Advisory Committee. Black African-American Advisory Board.
Good evening, members of the Board. Superintendent Lisa Allen, President Singh. Kind of had this whole speech about kind of updating about the communities of schools, the VA's committee. advisory committee. You know, we have 12 CSits of 18. That's going good. They're where and at now, the community school specialists are working on doing a listening sessions and needs assessment. But just looking at what tonight is, I'm pretty sure coming out of those listening sessions and needs assessments that are going on is going to be talking about the Student Support Center and the cuts going to be made and the people who are going to be affected, especially our students. So, kind of want to highlight that before how things are going on with community schools because this is an issue that's affecting all of us, all teachers, all staff, and the community, which, you know, I'm on the Community Schools Advisory Committee, which is about bringing everybody together. And so, this is a big effect, and I don't know how you guys resolve it, but y'all need to, what doesn't affect our students or teachers. So, but not to leave it on a downer. Total donations for the community has been now $272,000 over that. About $68,000 coming out of the last month. So that's people are getting involved and wanting to be a part of our schools, and that's a good thing. And there's going to be a big event in April called the Community Schools Spring Carnival, sponsored by Junior Rhodes, by California State University Paternity, New Athlete Papa, Sacramento River Cats. We also have council members, Maple and Mybang, as well as the Community Board of Supervisors, Patrick Candy. I'm sorry, I'm like a little emotional right now, just because it's been a kind of intense meeting so far. And I love this community. I love that we're involved in it, and we should do everything we can to support it with the community schools, but as well as making sure all of our students and teachers feel that way as well. Thank you.
Thank you. American Indian Education Program Parent Committee. All right. Moving on to item 9.3, a couple of reports. We'll start with Student Member Report.
Cool. At risk of standing like a Brooklyn record player, I'm going to be talking about another student walkout. This time, it was a joint walkout between Hiram Johnson and West Campus. I think I just wanted to discuss it because I had the great opportunity of being a part of this walkout and meeting these students, and I kind of want to discuss what I think is a pretty common misconception with student walkouts, that these students are really just trying to get out of class, trying to cut class or skip school, and that is absolutely not the case. I met some of the most passionate, intelligent students ever at these walkouts. Students spent so much time making posters, cutting up red cards to hand out to other students, staying until 5:00 PM, walking around Doka with their signs just to show their message. And I guess I just wanted to thank all the students who went out and then also encourage students to keep using their time and efforts and voices to really push out these messages, show their support. And then I also want to thank the amazing student safety staff, the staff from the district who followed around student protesters in cars to make sure they were safe, to make sure we were all safe, nobody was attacked, and nothing went off the rails. Then changing topics a bit, onto the topic of mental health and student support staff. I've had a lot of conversations in the past two weeks with other students about the potential cuts to mental health support staff and to student support staff, and I think the first question I get asked by students is a very confused what, why, like, why are these the people that would be cut? Why are these the first staff to be cut? And they understand a little more when you go into the nuances in like district budget policy and then grant funding running out, but it's still just very upsetting and concerning, I think, to most students that it seems like when money gets tight, the first people we turn to are also some of the people who are working with students most directly. I guess to just kind of visualize this, after the last Board meeting, I had like my school's social worker approached me and pulled me out of class just to check in on me and see if I was okay. And like at the time, I was not going through crisis. I was fine. I was just kind of tired and emotional at the Board meeting, but I kind of think about if I had been in crisis and how significant and impactful that would be to have a adult like on your school site actively approach you and ask, is everything okay? Is there anything I can do to support you? And I think that's something we really need to think about is ensuring and thinking like, are we still able to cut all these staff and make sure students are getting these experiences where they're actively being checked in on and actively being supported? Because I think a lot of students don't have a lot of trust in adults in the district or just adults in government in general right now. A lot of students feel like the world is against them, and it's really impactful that we have such amazing staff actively making students realize that they are not alone and that there's adults that care about them. In the Student Mental Wellness Council, we were discussing just how hard it is to reach students with mental health support. We were talking about things like a podcast and a website, and we understood that these things aren't going to be directly delivered to students and how really the best mental health support we can offer to students is having active ways for students to be approached at school, for students to actually be engaged in conversations about their mental health at school, and that's exactly what these support staff are doing. These staff are supporting these students every day on a personal one-on-one level to make these students actually feel safe going to school. On a similar note, I want to talk about the LGBTQ+ Support Services. I'm President of my school's GSA, and I know in the past few months, like some of our meetings, we just kind of sit there and look at each other because we honestly don't know what to say. We do a little presentation about the news, and then everyone just kind of sits there depressed because it feels like there's no optimism possible. And I think especially at a time like this, maintaining LGBTQ+ Support Services is absolutely vital. I know that the current staff members at the LGBTQ+ Support Services have done a lot to support our students. So many of my friends have come back with pamphlets, resources, know your rights papers from the LGBTQ+ Support Services, as well as have things like their names and pronouns changed in Infinity Campus so that they actually feel safe to transition socially comfortably at school. And I think my concern is if we cut down these staff and cut down LGBTQ+ Support Services, this burden is really going to fall onto that of like normal counselors or the registrar. And as great as these staff members are, quite frankly, they don't have the training or the resources or the expertise or the experience to help students adequately, specifically queer students. They don't know how to have a conversation with students about how do I get my name changed? How do I, you know, come out to my parents? How do I ask my teachers to use different pronouns for me? And I think that queer students already feel so unsupported that right now, it's really important that we ensure that these students are, have people that they can go talk to, specifically adults who work at our district who are going to inform them of their rights. And then I guess just one more thing. I think student mental health specialists are so important specifically for our students of color. It's no secret that there's giant stigmas around mental health, and a lot of students just don't feel comfortable going to their parents and saying, hey, I'm having a hard time, or hey, I'm feeling depressed, or hey, I'd like to seek out mental health services. So having trusted adults on school campuses and an abundance of trusted adults that students can go to and say and voice these thoughts and really share, this is what I need, I need support, is vital at this time.
Thank you. Superintendent Allen?
Thank you, President Singh. I would like to begin my remarks tonight by thanking our teachers, administrators, librarians, parents, elected leaders, and community members for taking the time to make Read Across America a huge success in our schools this month. Demonstrating your joy and passion for reading leaves a big impression for our students. I enjoy Read Across America because it allows me the opportunity to return to the classroom with students. At Tahoe Elementary, I was invited to read Rock Stars Don't Nap to Ms. Kinnick's kindergarten class. And at Edward Kimball, I read Lama Lama Red Pyjama to Ms. Berry's first grade classroom. I treasure the time I get to spend with our students, and I hope they enjoyed reading those books as much as I did because I got a kick out of it. And then yesterday, I had a wonderful visit at Oak Ridge Elementary to see the progress of the school rebuild. I am excited for the grand opening of our new school this summer, and I was touched by the conversations I had with the construction team working to build our new campus. They have an incredible amount of joy to be building this school in Oak Park community, and their care really shows in their work. I am so pleased to hear that this new school has become such a joy, a source of pride for our community members who will point to Oak Ridge and share their stories of what they did to build this school for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Allen. I love Lama Lama Red Pyjama. It's a good book. I am not going to say anything other than happy birthday to my mom, who is not watching this broadcast. And I will be home soon, I hope, to cut a cake. Information sharing by Board members.
So following Superintendent, I also wanted to talk a little about reading to the kids this week. I had the privilege of stopping by Matsuyama to read to Ms. Taggart's first grade class on Monday morning, really kicked off my week amazingly. She was my daughter teacher last summer, so it was really cool to kind of see her in action as well, and the amazing class that she has and the amazing class that we have all throughout our district. It really is a privilege. It's also really fun to read a book to someone who, I don't know how you would say it, my kids sometimes get tired of me reading the same books. It's a new audience. So then, turning to kind of a less positive note, I just wanted to, you know, briefly acknowledge kind of the conversations we've been having over these past two Board meetings and the number of public comments we've got about, you know, the reductions we've had to make due to funding changes and reduced enrollment in some of our sites. You know, I hope the community understands that these are not conversations that are easy for us. Everyone in this district does amazing work and helps our students. Ultimately, we're just not funded at a level that we really need to, to fully do everything we'd like to do, and we've got to pick what we want to do, where we best stretch those dollars, and in my opinion, it is best spent with parents who are, or, sorry, with adults who are in front of the students. So we're continuing to work on that, but our priorities remain the same. You know, we are fully committed to all the Board resolutions we've done before. We're committed to our LGBTQ+ youth. We're committed to our homeless youth and so many others, as well as mental health being a key priority. These are not things that are easy. I also would like to ask, you know, please check in with us. I am always open if people have questions about what positions are being cut, what's changing. I'm a little concerned that there's, you know, a little bit of misinformation out there because this process has been going so fast, and finding out what positions are the ones that are being affected, it kind of occurs on an hour-by-hour basis, but, you know, for example, there's a couple of positions tonight that were mentioned that were cut that it's my understanding we're not actually cut. And I just don't want rumors to get started that the Board is changing our priorities. We remain fully committed to what we've previously discussed on the DIAS, and, you know, please reach out if you think that's not the case. Thank you.
Member Navarro?
So I want to echo Member Kayata's comments, but on a more positive note, I want to invite everyone to Rosemont Little League Opening Day on Saturday. I will be there. If you have the time, come and stop by. I would love to see you there. Also, the next D-LAG meeting will be March 13th. If you can stop by, that'd be great. It'll be here at the South Carolina Room. Thank you.
Member Rhodes?
I'm making quick, guys. This Saturday at John Still, Metta View celebrates Arbor Week. Come out, plant some trees, get a little dirty with us. Thank you.
Member Ivara?
I wasn't sure if I turned it on. I just want to say I also enjoyed Read Across America. I got to read to a fourth grade class at Bowling Green Chacon, and it was so nice to connect with these kids and read a Spanglish book that one of our, it was Amanda who lent me the book. But anyways, it was fun. I actually wanted to say thank you to our Board President who has started, who kicked off our Know Your Rights presentations, and so, you know, I'm really grateful for that. We have one coming up in my area on Tuesday, March 11th at 5:30. So if you would like to know how to support folks in your circle of people who may be undocumented, this is a great place for you to go and learn how you can do that, and also invite folks who may need the information for themselves. And then I'm going to say it in Spanish because I have a lot of Spanish-speaking constituents. So, en once de marzo, martes once de marzo, vamos a tener una presentación para conocer sus derechos como personas indocumentadas, o para apoyar a sus seres queridos o personas en su comunidad que son indocumentadas, so les invito que me acompañen. También va a estar, are you going to be at that one Tuesday? También va a estar presente nuestro presidente Singh, y también le quiero dar unas palabras de agradecimiento por haber empezado este, estos, este va a ser el tercer presentación en el distrito, y vamos a tener otros cuatro después, para un total de siete cada martes, pero será en área cuatro, in Elder Creek Elementary School, el once, el martes once de marzo, a las cinco y media.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other Board members' reports out, I'm going to move on to item 10.1, our Safe Haven Board Resolution. So, I think I'm presenting this. So, Member Ivara just mentioned this, the Know Your Rights presentations. I'm going to, I will read parts of this out, and let's just start from there. So, Board Resolution 3480, our Safe Haven Board Resolution, reads that our Board passed Resolution 2915, declaring Sacramento City Unified School District as a Safe Haven District. Many years ago, the district continues to support the participation of all families and schools, acknowledging and embracing the fact that the United States itself has been built and enriched by diverse peoples, including our indigenous communities and generations of immigrants, be they documented or undocumented. Education plays a critical role in being the great equalizer for students who are historically marginalized in our society, creating an environment where students have the support, resources, and opportunities to succeed both academically and personally. In 1982, the United States Supreme Court issued a landmark ruling, Implyer versus Doe, affirming that all students must be provided equal access to a free, public K-12 education, regardless of their immigration status. However, with the executive branch in January 2025 directing ICE to end its longstanding policy identifying schools, places of worship, and hospitals as sensitive locations where enforcement actions would not be conducted absent limited specific exceptions, has brought us to this resolution where we do reaffirm our commitment and do reaffirm that this district will continue to not ask nor record any information related to a student's immigration status, and that the potential for ICE raids have exacerbated fears and anxiety within our immigrant communities and intensified the concerns about the current climate and increased risk of deportation. I want to make it very clear that the Board of Education reaffirms its Safe Haven status for all students. ICE or any other form of legal enforcement agency acting on its behalf shall not have any non-public access to any district, school, or facility without a valid judicial warrant or court order. Any such request will be reviewed by our Superintendent's Office before access is granted unless exigent circumstances exist and in accordance with applicable laws. As Member Ivara mentioned, Sac City Unified is holding and will As Member Ibarra mentioned, SAC City Unified is holding and will continue to hold Know Your Rights community education sessions in each of our seven trustee areas to provide immigration-related information, resources, and support to students and families. All our school sites have red cards available to families informing them of their rights during an encounter with immigration enforcement. As a safe haven district, we are committed to ensuring our environments are physically, socially, and emotionally safe. To support this commitment, our educators will continue to receive training and resources to advance their growth as anti-bias, anti-racist educators. And aligned with Board Policy 6144, will uphold and encourage staff engagement in conversations which support educators in teaching and discussing controversial issues. Shouldn't be very controversial. This district prioritizes student voices and we will continue to collaborate with our Student Advisory Council to figure out how to gather student insight on the culture and climate of our campuses. And I'm looking forward to engaging, we all are, with our Student Advisory Council in future planning efforts to foster a more equitable, informed school culture across all our campuses. The full resolution is available for folks to read. I'm going to open it up to see if there's any public comment first and we'll move to board discussion.
No public comment.
Thank you. Do we have board discussion on this resolution? Member Rhodes.
I was just saying, thank you for bringing this forward. And when the time is ready, I would like to move it.
Thank you. Student Member Jim Griffiths.
I just wanted to thank the district for putting in the work to create these Know Your Rights trainings for the community. I also want to thank everyone who helped to work on this resolution, including students in the Student Advisory Council who I know participated in providing feedback. I just want to follow up on one part of the resolution about school sites having red cards. I just kind of want to encourage all of my fellow board members to kind of check in with their school sites and make sure that they're actually actively handing out red cards to their students because I know there's been a lot of variation, school site to school site, on how they choose to hand out these red cards, whether they're in the front office or in the student support center, and just kind of ensuring that this information goes out to students potentially on like a PA system. But otherwise, I just want to thank everyone for the great work that's been done.
Thank you. Member Navarro.
Yeah, so I just want to acknowledge President Singh and the other executive board members for putting this together and the staff that put this together. And I also want to mention that we had a Know Your Rights session at Rosemont High last Tuesday and it was great. We had a good turnout. And also want to thank President Singh for putting that together with the staff and all the staff that was there. I want to thank you for that. And yeah, when we're ready, I want to second the motion.
Thank you. Member Kayata.
So I would also like to thank Members Singh for bringing this tonight. As many of people watching probably know, we had a press conference a couple of weeks ago now where a lot more was said and I'm not going to repeat all that. Please go watch the video because there's amazing information there from us and from community partners. I just wanted to, you know, in appreciating that we have this resolution here, we've held these principles firm since 2016 formally, but well before that as well as the district and as a community, where all members of our community are welcome and we will do everything we can to protect them in their community and ask students to learn. To me, it's especially important that we're doing this now because there's a lot of pressure from the federal government saying if you do things like this, you might become a target. And you know what? That's even more reason that we should do this, to show our community and to show that our values remain firm. And it's hard out there right now. I feel it, but we will do everything in our power to make sure members of our community are welcome and safe. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'll just close out by saying, before we move to the vote, I do want to thank the partners that are working with us. We have the University of California Immigrant Legal Resource Center. We have Asian Pacific American Bar Association of Sacramento. These are folks who are full-time attorneys who are taking time out of their busy days to come and host Know Your Rights presentations for our communities. But it's not just for our students and our families. We're hosting these sessions for anyone who is in Sacramento or wants to make the drive to Sacramento. And I will say that in the experiences so far with these two events, and I want to commend our school safety team, that folks feel comfortable and welcome. The fact that we have a safe haven policy is why folks feel comfortable coming to an in-person Know Your Rights session, because this is a safe space. We have folks here who are not necessarily have any authority through law enforcement, which is our safety team. So there's an added layer of feeling safe and welcome in these situations. It is not easy. We're not asking folks to disclose their immigration status. And the whole point is that this is a board policy that this entire board stood behind in alignment with our staff at that press conference. And to be honest, I reflect a lot on this. These Know Your Rights presentations remind me of why I am in the position that I am in and why I like doing the work that I'm doing, is because it is about community. It is about making our kids feel safe. And if we're going to get to the point of increasing our enrollment and having students and families come back to this district and stay in this district, then they need to feel welcome. And if this does any sort of part in helping folks feel like they belong, then I'm proud of the work that we're doing as a board and as a staff aligned on this mission to get our message out there that everyone is welcome. So, thank you so much and I am going to honor Member Rhodes as a motion to move and Member Navarro as a second and we'll move to a roll call vote. Thank you. Student Member first.
Aye.
Member Jean.
Aye.
Member Kayata.
Aye.
Member Benjamin.
Aye.
Member Navarro.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Singh.
Aye.
Member Ibarra.
Aye.
All right, thank you so much. Moving on to item 10.2, District Wellness Committee Update. This is informational item. Just sorry, everybody knows.
Thank you so much, members of the board. I'm Diana Flores, Executive Director of Nutrition Services, Central Kitchen and Distribution. And today I have a colleague here, Kristi Weber. She's the Program Manager for Alliance for Healthier Generation. We're going to give you an update on the district's wellness committee. I also want to lift up our core values once again and ensure that all our students are able to learn, grow, and thrive, especially as this is the wellness committee, so. Sorry, I need my glasses on. A local school wellness policy is a written document that guides a school district's efforts to establish school environments that promote students' health, well-being, and ability to learn. Our current student wellness policy, Board Policy 5030, was first adopted in August of 2006. The current student wellness policy was adopted by the school board in August of 2017 with many revisions from input throughout the district and parents and our community at large. The last school year, the school community membership had recruitment efforts that were successful with over 25 active participating members currently, district staff, parents, and members of the community, Food Literacy Center, Alchemist, Alliance for Healthier Generation, Health Ed Council, and 14 new students. Our SAC City Wellness Policy addresses many areas that promote healthy behaviors and prevents chronic diseases so that students can reach their full potential in the classroom and out. Some of the key areas of the wellness policy include students having access to healthy food and beverages while at school, students receiving high-quality physical education and physical activity, every school is safe, clean, and a healthy place in which students, staff, and families can learn, work, and engage, students have access to health services in partnership with schools, school-based health centers, school health professionals, community agencies, and families, and other areas of the wellness policy, including school gardens, food literacy, classroom celebrations, special diets, employee wellness, healthy fundraising, and much more. Over the past year, we have focused on three areas: the Food Access Center, the Student Mental Health Project, and the first-ever triennial assessment. The Food Access Center is one of the great examples of our community partners coming together. With help from both our nutrition program, No Kid Hungry, Alchemist, Sacramento Food Bank, and the Homeless Services Department, the Food Access Center is next door, which a lot of people are unaware of here at Serna Center, serving 180 families identified as food insecure. Many of them have difficulties with transportation barriers to food access. That is 570 food bags a month that are delivered by student support and health services teams, community volunteers, and intra-district mail and warehouse deliveries.
Good evening, members of the board. With the Student Mental Health Committee, through a $20,000 mini-grant from Kaiser and Alliance for Healthier Generation, we have partnered with Student Support Services as well as the Youth Development Department to create a Student Mental Health Council. Through the process, we've been working with the Student Advisory Council as well as to get their guidance and their wisdom. Through the project, nearly 300 high school students across the district applied, representing all high schools in the district. It was a long, tedious process, but the Student Advisory Committee created a wonderful process for selecting students and 14 students were selected to participate. The work of this committee is based on elevating and improving mental health supports for students throughout the district. One of the projects of the wellness committee was to collect some data, which is also known as the triennial assessment, based on the wellness policy and how it's been implemented throughout the district. Through this data, through the survey, 73 site administrators provided responses in December. And some of the highlights, as you can see, would be that 88% of schools are only allowing healthy food and non-food items for celebrations. About 78% of schools reported that they're in compliance with ED Code 49056 with the recess law. 75% of schools regularly refraining from using food or candy as a reward. Another great celebration is that 100% of schools are meeting the required weekly minutes of physical education and almost 100% of schools are offering additional physical activity opportunities for students. Some of the opportunities for growth, let me go back one slide, that we found with this data is that only 66% of schools indicated that they would need to establish an onsite wellness committee that would serve as an advisory committee for the wellness of students and staffs. Also, only 43% of campuses reported that they offer nutrition education regularly and we see that as a recommended area for opportunity.
And lastly, one of the updates we would like to make and recommend to the student wellness policy at the next board meeting would be to include the federal USDA non-discrimination statement. We have learned since the wellness policy was passed in 2017, this is a new requirement and needs to be added to the wellness policy. So I hope to bring that back at the next meeting and then we'll open it up for questions.
Thank you so much. Public comment?
No public comment.
Any board discussion or questions? Member Jim Griffiths.
I just wanted to give thanks for the creation of the Student Mental Wellness Committee and thank also the adult support we've gotten there. The students have been just like working really, really hard. I know yesterday's meeting, we discussed a lot about really just how to reach students and how to kind of like break down the stigmas around mental health and try and find like innovative ways that we can encourage students to like have open discussions about mental health in a way that also feels like organic and youth-led. So I'm really looking forward to what that project turns out to be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item 10.3, Construction Update. Mr. Wilson.
Good evening, President Singh, members of the board, Superintendent Allen. I'm here to provide an update to our bond construction program. As a leading district department in implementing true equity into our program, I'm excited to show you the proof and the results of this work from the last few years and how it will continue to guide our work. In the presentation tonight, I will cover the funding we have available for our projects, an update on current projects, and provide an anticipated five-year major project outlook. For this presentation, DSA refers to the Division of State Architect, the leading jurisdiction over school construction and buildings. I'd like to take a moment and introduce you to our new Director of Construction, Matt Juknowitz. I'll get it one day, I promise. He's on day four. And with our recently passed bond, our expectations are even higher to meet the community's needs and having a leader of this department solely focused on this work will make us more efficient and creative on providing the next generation of educational spaces to our students. For the size of our program, we have a relatively small staffing cost but includes some of the most detailed and dedicated staff in the area. We have four bonds supported and passed by the community since 2012, Measure Q and R in 2012, Measure H in 2020, and recently Measure D. We are only using Measure H at this time and anticipate selling our first series for Measure D in January of 2026 to take advantage of the most favorable rates possible. This slide shows a dashboard we use in our facilities department and will soon be available on our new website that shows where we are currently working with bond money. As you can see, we are well spread apart across the district with almost $500 million of work in some type of phase of a project. This dashboard will also help us with new compliance expectations for Proposition This is a list of all the projects on the desk. Different phases for these projects determine workload for different individuals. For example, Matt, myself are usually very involved in the planning and design while the project managers and engineers help projects in construction and closeout. A typical major modification and/or new build needs 48 months from start to finish and a small mod, such as a campus renewal, takes about 30 months to complete from start to finish. Always on our workload is site security. We are always finding ways to enhance this aspect from new controls at front doors, new strategic fencing, adding cameras, and anything else we may believe protect our staff and students from bell to bell. This slide shows the level of investment each year from the 14, 15 fiscal year to today. As you can see, in the last three years, we have really pushed to invest faster and make the most impactful difference in our neighborhoods. For this fiscal year, eight months in, we have already spent the most ever at $161 million and expect to be around $241 million this fiscal year. The next few years will go down a skosh and I hope to level out around $125 million per year to have the most predictable cash flow and project balance as we plan out our bond sales and future timing. We may seek additional authorization from voters. Just yesterday, I was honored for Superintendent Allen, Chief Marking, and Chief Dr. McCarron to join the project team for a tour of your new Oak Ridge Elementary School. The rendering on the left is something we have stared at for 24 months, but the picture on the right shows it coming to life and looking as expected. I want to thank Auto Construction, Norton Lewis Architects, and ICS Construction Management for hosting our tour yesterday and working so hard to keep this project on schedule and on budget. This slide is an updated viewpoint of the new Caesar Chavez Elementary School, also on schedule and on budget. Also this last fall, we opened up Burbank and McClatchy's new athletic fields, hosting games now in season with a lot of praise of the new work from players and coaches. This summer, we will begin two new major projects. The first is Fern Bacon Middle School, groundbreaking in June and scheduled to open in fall of 2027. Next year, the campus will host only eighth graders with the following year being a closed campus so we can complete the project. You will also begin the building of a new Pacific Elementary School. With a similar schedule to Fern Bacon, we will complete this project in 2027. The students and staff at Pacific will be moved to CBY. The students and staff at Pacific will be moved to CBYR for the two school years, similar to how Nicholas did during their construction time. A lot of factors play into how we plan projects, including business aspects of being able to maximize state reimbursement funding and availability of contractors and vendors to complete projects of massive scale. Here's an anticipated look at our bond program schedule. This does not include other funding, such as project developer fees or maintenance funding, so it is not a complete list of work. As Measure D also calls out several deferred maintenance items such as HVAC and roof replacements, you can see through two thousand and twenty-nine, we will be completely full and busy. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions after public comment.
Thank you so much. Public comment?
No public comment.
All right, board discussion, comments, questions. Member Ibatu.
Good evening. Thank you for this very detailed report. I just have a few questions that you probably don't have an answer for right now, and that's totally fine. The first one is, I see Bowling Greens Campus Renewal, but I don't see, I see it listed on slide, I don't know what number this is.
Current projects?
Active projects map, yeah. So I see at the top, it says the Bowling Greens, so both of them renew, but I don't see where it aligns with the little circles. Does that mean that it's gonna have like work done to the school, or it's gonna be rebuilt?
Yeah, starting, it's, it's a modernization, so a campus renewal, so it's underground utilities, new parking, classroom improvements at both sites. We're adding two portables to Chacon, new fields, new playgrounds, and the OH Building will become the new pre-K, TK kindergarten complex.
Okay, that's great news.
The twelve-month project.
Perfect. And then I do see here for projects and planning on page seven, we'll see what's modernization is scheduled for two thousand and twenty-eight, and I'm, I'm bringing this up here because this is something that I've heard about for many years, and it's getting hotter and hotter, and I know that we're getting a new school, but I have concerns around, and this is for, for the, more of a comment for the board than for our presenter today. It's like, what are we gonna do to make sure our kids aren't suffering from heat exhaustion? I was just there last week to judge a swing dance competition, and we're not even in spring yet, and it was, it was not pleasant. And so, we, we need to look at the schools as they're waiting for their turn, and they don't have access to cool places for, in their gym or multipurpose rooms, we need to look at how we're addressing that. So, that's all the comments I have for this evening.
Thank you. You have the comments? Member Runtz?
It's, it's very brief. So Edward Kimball, Sasa Chavez, it's always amazing to go to the site and then actually see how much has been done, and the community around it, how much they're impacted by it. So I just wanna say kudos to you and the team. This is some really beautiful work. Once again, school buildings, neighborhood building, and we're building out our neighborhoods in ways that haven't been done in generations, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Runtz. And on that topic, I think it's obvious from our map that we're investing in our most high-need communities and areas, so that map is very clearly curved in a certain way that impacts our most high-need communities. I will say, it's nice to see Hiram Johnson's Performance Arts Center on here. I have talked about that a lot.
I thought you'd be enjoying that one.
Yes, lots of fun viewing the Performance Arts Center. And then I also appreciate you having some sort of calendar for how Measure, Measure D may plan out in four, five, six, seven years, so looking forward to all the updates. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Goldman, we have eleven point one, eleven point two, and eleven point three, all charter renewals, all presented by Ms. Goldman and her team.
Mostly, you're gonna hear from the principals tonight, but.
That's good.
I'll start us off. All right, so first of three tonight, we have the public hearing for charter renewal for George Washington Carver School of Arts and Sciences, which we will mostly call Carver because it's a very long name. So I will read this statement before each of our, of our hearings tonight. So on January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, George Washington Carver School of Arts and Science submitted a petition to renew its charter, is requesting to renew the term of its charter, which expires on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. The purpose of this public hearing is to consider the support of the petition from the district's teachers, other employees, and parents. George Washington Carver is a locally funded or dependent charter school authorized by Sacramento City Unified School District. This is not the time that you will be making a decision on this charter renewal. You will be receiving a staff report from me no later than March nineteenth, and then you will see Carver back here for a vote on either April third or April tenth. And I will now hand over the microphone to Principal Kobeltz for the remainder of this presentation.
Good evening, School Board, Superintendent Allen, Cabinet members. My name is Lenicia Henderson Kobeltz. I am the principal of this lovely school of choice, George Washington Carver School of Arts and Science, that has been in existence and in partnership with SCUSD since two thousand and seven. George Washington Carver's vision for students is not only that they graduate college-ready, but that they have the mastery of skills for our world to be successful. We are committed to being a Waldorf-inspired school, so if you look at the slides, you can see that we are about heart, head, and hand. That means we connect to our students, and there is hands-on learning in each and every area of meaningful engagement of our education. Our key strengths and achievements, we have a strong partnership with the city of Rancho Cordova, which connects our students to free college tuition at Folsom Lake College, and a very strong partnership with our parent guild. You may see a few wearing "We Love Carver" shirts. Our suspension rate is two point seven percent, which is lower than SCUSD and the state of California in two thousand and twenty-three. Our graduation rate is ninety-seven point four percent, which is also extremely high in comparison to SCUSD and the state. Students come to Carver because of our climate and our culture. We have an eighty-five percent favorable rating, significant improvements in anti-bias and anti-racism, as well as emotional recognition. We are a very diverse school, as you can see by the photo. Our Hispanic demographic has increased to thirty-seven point one percent. In two thousand and twenty-three, there was a hundred and seventy-eight students in our population. We did increase that this year, and twenty-seven percent of our students are from out of the district as far as Elk Grove and North Highlands, Davis, you name it. College and career readiness, according to the dashboard of two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-seven point eight percent of our students are prepared for college. However, we know that, anecdotally, a large amount, and many more of our students attend community college and college programs, along with our ACE and our AP classes, our dual enrollment, and our partnership with Folsom Lake College and internships with other community partners. Our academic and performance and growth areas are in English and math, so we are targeting interventions and professional development, increasing our project-based learning, and piloting IXL for math. In conclusion, our call to action is that George Washington Carver is committed to student success. We continue to be a school of choice. We meet all of the renewal requirements, and we look forward to our partnership. We would also, before we conclude the presentation, like to show a video of our school that was part of a collaboration with SCUSD.
Firewall themselves.
Maybe if you.
Member Navarro, do you wanna step in?
Well, the video is four minutes and twenty-nine seconds, and so I have four minutes and twenty-four seconds, so maybe we can just see part of it. Maybe if you go all the way down to the bottom of that slide, there is, if you go down a little bit more, sometimes you can click it.
Yeah.
We'll take comments while we were, I guess, real quick.
So since we have some time and we're, we're holding, we're having some IT issues, so I wanted to say that I've been to the campus, it's an awesome campus, I met Ms. Kobeltz, they showed me around, they have an awesome orchard and a garden that'll be, that'll be looking good in the next few months. If you haven't gotten a chance, I invite you guys to come over. And yeah, if you, if you're a parent in the district, I encourage you to sign up your kids to go to Washington Carver. It's a great school, it's awesome, it doesn't, it doesn't really look like a school, it looks like a, like, almost like a college campus, and it's great. Also, I wanna shout out to the Guild, they're really involved. Yeah, so if you haven't, if, if parents are out there, I would, I would invite you to sign up for George Car, or George Washington Carver. It's a great school, especially if you think you'll enjoy the small school feel. I strongly recommend it.
Thank you, Member Navarro. And with that, we'll press play.
I think what is most special about this school is that it is a small high school with a group of teachers that really care about their students and super strive every day to connect with them. It is a Waldorf-inspired school, which has a whole added layer of intentionality in terms of learning.
For us, it's start with the heart. It's all about getting the kids involved emotionally, then from there, it goes to the head, have the student thinking about, how do we apply this to the world, and then it, it goes to the hands. So now we're, they're, they're using their hands to actually create things or to become involved out there in the community in social and environmental justice.
My school is unique because of like, the community that it brings. We're a small school, but everyone knows each other.
We are definitely one of a kind. We are extremely diverse in our staff, our student body, but most importantly, people, kids and staff feel like they can be themselves, express themselves.
I went to a bigger school, and I just, I didn't feel like myself, my, my mentality, it just, it wasn't me. And when I came here, I was afraid that it would be the same, right? But when I came here, I was honestly welcomed with open arms.
When you ask a teacher for help, they're willing to sit next to you, help you after school or during lunch, and they're willing to provide all the things that you need to help you succeed in their class, and then they would even go above and beyond to help you succeed in another class.
Waldorf students tend to really thrive more so than your traditional schools when it comes to competing in the academic world, because we are not just teaching the standard, we are truly trying to make sure that they can relate and connect.
I went to a big high school before this, I mean, I just came here my junior year. I was a one-point-oh student, I'm a four-point-oh student due to the teachers paying more attention to me and helping me through my curriculum.
I think that education is good, it's very college, college prep. So we have an ACE program, it's where we do college stuff in our genetic classes, and we will get college credits for it, and then twice a week, we have a college class.
They will find a way, since it is an arts and science class, to put in art, to put art into the projects, so like I said, you could be creative and just jog your imagination.
We're just trying to make sure that arts is in every aspect of their classes. Writing and reading and speaking is in all of our classes. Little bit of math is in all of our classes. Little bit of science is everywhere, so that I'm not just teaching music, I'm teaching the science of how music is made.
The beautification of the campus is also another expression for ourselves. We clean up the campus, we make it our own, and just make it feel like a home.
We have a very big project called our watershed project, where we try to help the environment get cleaned up and better.
Our campus is generally pretty clean because our students do have a respect for the environment, so we don't really have to tell them to pick up trash and throw things away. So it's more of a day of real beautification. You'll see students demonstrating their artistic talent with chalk or paint. Maybe they feel that a bench needs a little color, or a wall needs some art on it, pulling weeds, planting daffodils and poppy seeds, so it's really about taking care of your world and the place that you live in, and contributing and doing some service for that.
Here at Carver, the uniqueness is the culture and the philosophy of learning that we work with our students. We want our students to be free to pursue the things that they're interested in.
I love this school, I love this school with all my heart, and if someone is looking for somewhere where they can be accepted, they can be themselves, where teachers can actually focus on you and help you if needed, this school, George Washington Carver, is definitely the place for them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our public comments session.
We have three.
All right.
First speaker is Ansel Soto, followed by Reed Wages and Maggie Soto.
Hello, my name is Ansel Soto. I am at George Washington Carver. One thing that, uh, ooh, yeah. The sports program, I'd just like to say the sports program is not just important to me, but a lot of people at the school too. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Reed, I am Reed Wages, I attend Carver. I'm in the ASB program, well, ASB class, and it's so great being able to be a leader and be a part of the like, community and everything. I love like our school, it's so awesome.
Good evening, my name is Maggie Soto. I'm Ansel's mom, I'm also on the Guild, and I just wanted to share what is important to me about George Washington Carver School of Arts and Science, and that is the small, small school environment coupled with the Waldorf-inspired philosophy has created a situation where I can build a relationship with our principal and the other faculty to be able to foster the kind of environment where my son is thriving. And he has little sisters that I really hope get to be in that community and environment and thrive just as he has, so please consider renewing our charter, we really love Carver. Thank you for what you said, it was fabulous having you on campus, and I invite you all to come and see what a beautiful place it is, so thank you for your time, have a great evening.
Thank you. Board discussion. Questions, comments? This is not a voting matter, it's informational item for today's FYI. I'll let you speak twice, Member Navarro, go ahead.
Yeah, so I just wanna reemphasize, it's a great school, has a great feel. I don't know, if I had an opportunity to go back, I think I'd go there, so look into it. I, I think this is a matter, we're trying to. I, I think this is a matter, we're trying to recruit here more parents, but, so I think, I think obviously I support the renewing of the charter. So thank you for the presentation. I love the video, by the way. Did we discuss having a video when I was there? I don't remember.
I'm not sure. I think it was in progress.
Okay. Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you for that unofficial statement of support. Thank you. That's it.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was like, that's it? I'm done? Oh, wait, no, I'm not done. All right. Number two. Principal Martin, great, thank you. All right, so this is public hearing number two that we have tonight. This is on the Charter Renewal for Sacramento New Technology Early College High School. You will recognize this slide. It is exactly the same. On January 31st, 2025, Sacramento New Technology Early College High School submitted their petition to renew their charter. Their charter is expiring on June 30th, 2025. They are a locally funded or dependent charter school authorized by Sacramento City Unified. You will see them for a decision on this charter renewal on either April 3rd or April 10th. We're still sort of working that out. And you will get a report from me on all of my findings on March 19th. And with that, I will hand the clicker over to Principal Martin to share about her school.
Good evening, Board President Singh, Board members and Superintendent Allen. My name is Jessica Martin. I am the principal of Sacramento New Technology Early College High School. And tonight, I'm going to give you kind of a bird's eye or a thousand-foot view of our school and then encourage questions and visits and things like that. So I want to start with our vision and our mission. And so just briefly, you can read these all on your own because you have the access to them. But our vision is simply to bridge the gap between high school and college. And so we want to equip all of our students to be prepared for those post-secondary outcomes, no matter what they are. And our mission is we want to do that through project-based learning. So that is kind of the base of our school. Here is our demographics. And as you can see, we are also very diverse, very similar to the diversity in Sac City Unified, Sac County, and even comparable to the state of California. We believe learning best occurs when students engage in real-world projects. We believe that learning best occurs when students have access to early college opportunities. And we also believe that learning best occurs when students are in small, safe school environments. So I want to talk to you about a couple of key components of our school. I'm going to start on the left side, the right side, your left, whatever, with parent engagement. So I have a parent power hour that parents are able to come to monthly. We have an early college program in partnership with Sac City College. Our DOL program, which I'll tell you a little bit more about in a minute. We have a CTE pathway, and it is actually, at this moment, the only computer science pathway available in the district. We are very restorative in our discipline, or we're always trying to work out options. Suspension is very rarely our first go-to, so you'll see our suspension rate is pretty low. And then ongoing professional development. But now to kind of the meat, which is project-based learning. So if you look at a regular project, a regular lesson, school lesson, a teacher might give a project that occurs at the end of the lesson. And that's normal, just doing a project. But in project-based learning, the lesson is the project. And so we, we equate it to how everybody loves dessert, right? Everybody loves dessert after a good meal. But where do we get our sustenance from? Where do we get our nutrition from? The main course. And that's what project-based learning is. We educate our students through our five learning outcomes. We believe that it takes more than content to teach students. And so we teach them proficiency and knowledge and critical thinking, written communication, collaboration, agency, and oral communication. And they're, they're given feedback and graded on all five of these. We also have our pillars of culture, character, and community. And so we don't have bells, we don't have hall passes. If you come to New Tech, it's a very calm environment. You feel it right off the bat. And it's because of these four pillars that we instill in all of our students. We believe that student voice is one of the most important functions of our school. And so this is just some evidence of that. We do participate in the Kelvin Poll surveys. We also do empathy interviews and we hold listening sessions. And then I have a principal's advisory cabinet of students who advise me on issues around the school. You can see post-pandemic, our academic growth has been pretty steady in both ELA and math with growth each year. And our graduation rate has also always been good, but big progress post-pandemic where now we're far surpassing the district and the state. I want to spend a little bit of time here on our dual enrollment data because this is what makes early college so significant and amazing. So if you look at the year 21, 22, so New Tech has been a school since 2003, and they've always offered dual enrollment opportunities. So I don't want to miss that part. Kids have always gone to college there. But in 21 and 22, which was my second year, we had, our students were enrolled in 37 college courses, and that was only offered to 11th and 12th graders. So if you now move over to 24 and 25 this year, you will see it's just about, just shy of 250 college courses that all grade-level students are enrolled in. So big, significant. This is, this is evidence of us giving students opportunities to experience college with a lot of support. So as I was talking about our defensive learning, you all got invitations from me and I've heard back from some of you. I look forward to you being on our panels this year. It's a pretty amazing experience to see. Some of you have already seen it. But we have started collecting data. We had to kind of put the DOL program back together. We started collecting data so that we can really give our students and ourselves some feedback on how do we support students in reflecting on what they've learned. And that's what this is all about, reflecting on what they've learned and then being able to defend that in front of a panel of adults by themselves. So it's, it's a pretty cool thing to see. And then I just want to be very reflective that we do have current challenges that we are addressing. We want to call them out because it's important to do that. And so the first one is Black Student Achievement. I came before you guys. It was a little bit of a different board, but some of you were still here when I was talking about my LCAP. And so we call it out on our LCAP Goal Three. Everything is aligned to WASC and LCAP throughout all of these slides, everything that we do. But LCAP Goal Three specifically calls out how are we educating our Black students? And there's, there's a significant deficit there. And so three ways that we're doing that is we're creating meaningful partnerships with programs like Just Like a Mom. Sac City College has a program called Emoja where it's classes specifically for Black students. And so we're connecting them in that way. And then we are able also to hire a full-time office staff who tracks attendance and provides families with resources. And so that's been a big change. Math proficiency is also an area. We recognize that while we did have growth from 23 to 24, we, it was small growth. And so we want bigger growth. And what big thing that we've done, you see the iXL implementation, we hired another full-time math teacher. But the most innovative thing that we've done, and you have to come out and see, is we combined PE with Math One into an integrated course where a math teacher and a PE teacher teach the course together. And so students are learning Math One and PE at the same time, making math more relevant to them. Come see that. And then lastly, we want to always focus on college and career. And some moves that we've done there is our, call it, sorry, computer science CTE teacher is only now teaching that those CTE courses where it wasn't like that in the previous years. More students are taking college courses, as you saw. Through the grants that we received, we're able to provide extra supports for students in college, which is going to give them more A to G opportunities and supports as well. With about 15 seconds left, I want to say thank you for your attention. Please reach out, please come and visit, and thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Public comment.
We have five. First speaker, Estli Benitez, followed by Shawna Stein and Eric Downey.
Hello. My name is Estli Benitez. I'm a proud 11th grade student at Sacramento New Technology Early College High School. I'm currently taking 10 units at Sacramento City College through Los Rios this semester. I come from immigrant parents and I'm first generation born here in America. At Sacramento New Technology Early College High School, I'm thought of as an individual with potential. I would not thrive at my home public school. At the previous high school that I was at, I was not considered a student that was college-bound. Teachers at New Tech know me on a personal level and are able to help each student in every classroom with their individual needs. No one is ever overlooked. The dual enrollment program helps prepare me for my future and shows that each person can be college-bound. The community is encouraging and vital to the student body's success. Please renew the charter at Sacramento New Technology Early College High School.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Shawna Stein, and I come to this meeting with an interesting perspective. I'm a retired professor from Sacramento City College, and my grandson goes to New Tech. And it's been my experience that a lot of students coming to community college aren't quite prepared. And I am not seeing that at New Tech. I am a volunteer there. I've been a volunteer there for three years. And the students are really getting the help they need to be able to go to college and be successful. My grandson graduates this year. He'll have 22 units at Sac City College. He was with us the other day in the car. I said, so what are you going to, where are you going to go to college? He goes, oh, I'm going to finish at Sac City. And I said, well, okay, what are you going to major in? And he goes, I'm getting my Agnesi. How many kids know what an Agnesi is in high school? I mean, I was totally impressed with this kid. I think some of the other things the school has going for is its location. They are in an underserved neighborhood that has students that come there because that's the closest school to them. And they're getting this wonderful opportunity to really have a lot of hands-on help and one-on-one encouragement. Finally, I know this is about renewing the charter, but I can't speak highly enough about the staff and administration at the school. They give it their all. They work very, very, very long hours. And I know a lot, all teachers do. But I have been totally impressed with what I've seen come out of this school.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Eric Downey, followed by Juliana Nolavu, and then Michaelander.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Eric Downey, and my son Isaac Downey is a senior at Sacramento New Technology Early College High School. I'm also the current president of New Tech's PTSA. Over the past three and a half years, I've had the most amazing experience volunteering at New Tech and wanted to share a few thoughts with you. First off, New Tech's size. It's considerably smaller than most high schools in our district. This immediately got my son's attention. He was a small fish who needed a small pond, and New Tech provided that environment. The smaller student base meshed perfectly with his personality and helped him thrive. Another huge part of his growth has been his participation in the early college program. The early college program provides a safe environment for the students to enroll, navigate, and be successful at a college level. This process, program also gives students the confidence and encouragement to continue their college education. My son Isaac will be graduating with more college, more college credits than I acquired, and he's hungry for more. I couldn't be more proud. And of course, none of this would have been possible without the staff at New Tech. Their unyielding commitment to make a difference in their students' lives is nothing less than inspiring. What they do goes beyond teaching. I've seen them be a helping hand, a listening ear, a shoulder to cry on, or a comforting word. Mentors in every sense of the word. I will truly miss these wonderful people after my son graduates. I will end with a story. When the gardeners of the Galaxy Club that I've had the honor to work with were asked what their theme should be for their new garden, they said "community." Our garden should be a space where people gather and socialize, giving back to the community and to those in need. This thought process is light years beyond where I was at their age. We need more people in the world like this, and Sacramento New Technology Early College High School is ready for the challenge. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Michaelander, and I am a senior at New Technology Early College High School. I've been going to New Technology Early College High School for all four years of my high school life. And this school has provided me with amazing teachers and amazing opportunities that I never thought were possible. From my own principal bringing to our physics class a, a school grant project, to give our school $5,000 for climate change, to my own teacher, my own computer science teacher, Mr. Wong, to promoting Code Wars, to me and my fellow classmates to take time out of his own weekends to take us to these events in Roseville. And finally, to me bringing my own internship and presenting a school-wide assembly to my whole entire school with my own employer. New Technology High School has been an incredible improvement onto my life. It's provided me with the ability to participate in college, which I, at the time, before high school, I didn't even know was possible. I now acquire 17 college credits in total, and I will receive 20 after, and will get three more after the semester. I hope that my younger brother can also go to the school because I also want him to receive the exact same opportunities I got and the amazing teachers that I was able to be with. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, esteemed board members. My name is Juliana Nolavu. Next to me are my young ones. I am a proud parent of a junior student at Sac New Technology Early College High School. I am here today to express my strong support for the renewal of our school charter because of the incredible impact it has had on my child and our community. When my son first started at Sac Nitec, he struggled with socializing with scholars and must also always try to name a few. Thanks to the dedicated teachers, small class sizes, and supportive environment, he has thrived. He is now excelling in all courses, in college courses, and has gained confidence in his abilities. The school has truly made a difference in his life. Beyond my own family's experience, Sac Nitec has played a critical role in our community. It supports diverse learners and prepares students for college and careers. Many families, including mine, have chosen this school because of its commitment to student success. Sadly, he's not here, but he is at home attending his college courses thanks to Sac Nitec. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
No more public comment.
All right, board comments, discussions. Member Kayadan.
All right, now it's my turn to talk up a school in my area. I just want to start by really just like bowing to Principal Martin. You've taken a school that historically has been kind of like a hidden gem, and you're doing amazing things with it. And also shout out to the staff, every single one of them at the school I know is all in on that vision. Really, I couldn't be more proud to have this school in my area and in this district. The focus on everyone getting a college education is truly amazing. Something that we've talked about before, but wasn't part of your presentation today, is the school's ability to take kids who is the school's ability to take kids who might not be thriving in some of our other schools and to really turn their lives completely around, like a complete 180, so many kids. It really is amazing the work that's being done at the school. And you know, for anyone who's looking for a school, really, go check them out. Yeah, I think we all know how to vote on this when it was back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Kayada. Anyone else? Member Benjamin, and then Member Navarro.
Yeah, I want to just kind of give Principal Martin her flowers in another hat that I wear. I was able to come this year, right, and kind of teach a civics course in a small way to the class, I mean, to the school, excuse me. And so let me just say, you're doing a great job, you know, and a lot of it comes from leadership. I love this ideal of kind of, you know, a big picture school, if you will, right? These big projects that the kids are involved in that allows them to work together. I think that brings, you know, just kind of the community together. Also, the fact that you've connected to these local community college affinity programs like EMOJA, that's really important, right? Because what happens is it allows the students to visualize themselves at the post-secondary education level, and I think that's important. So I just want to say thank you and give you your props.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Navarro.
I just want to say that Member Kayada mentioned something that was really important. I think it kind of applies to the small schools. I think it applies to George Carver, where you take a kid that might be struggling in a big school, and you went to a small school, and all of a sudden, like, things change, and they're thriving. And we hear students that are getting college units now, close to their, you know, senior year. So it's awesome to see. I love it. I'm also more of an IT guy, so I would consider going to this school instead, but George Washington Carver is closer to me, so I have to be loyal. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Navarro. There's still one more school, so you have one more school to also think about going to at the end of this evening. Thank you, and I just want to say, Principal Martin, this photo captures who you are. You're very intentional in your education and uplifting students of color and students of underrepresented communities, so just appreciate the work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you, and small schools save lives.
So our last public hearing tonight is for the Met Sacramento, our third small dependent charter high school. They're all coming up, all right. So as said before, January 31st, 2025, the Met Sacramento submitted a petition to renew its charter. It's requesting to renew the term of its charter, which expires on June 30th, 2025. The purpose of this public hearing is to consider the support for the petition from the district's teachers, other employees, and parents. The Met Sacramento is a locally funded or dependent charter authorized by Sacramento City Unified. Once again, you all will receive a report from me summarizing any findings on their renewal and on their data and all of those things on March 19th, and then we will see them back here on either April 3rd or April 10th for a decision. And at this point, I will hand the clicker over to Principal Kayada.
Gotcha. Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Allen and Board of Education. Hi, Mary. My name's Araklio Guvara. I'm the son of Julia Parra and Manuel Guvara. I'm the proud principal of the Met Sacramento High School here today to talk a bit about our school with the hopes of a clear charter renewal. I'm not going to go over the table of contents, as you could see them in front of you, so I'll go to the next one. We're located at 810 B Street on the corner of 8th and V to be exact, in the Southside Park neighborhood, right off of I-5 and I-80 and 50 corridor. The school's mission is to educate all students, including those who may not have succeeded in a more traditional educational setting. We graduate students who are self-directed, independent learners, who have critical thinking skills and core knowledge that will allow them to be successful in college as well as in life. Our graduates are unique and creative individuals who will be able to rise above adversity and adult world. Before you, you see our student population compared to the Sac City Unified School District from last school year and this, sorry, two years ago in this school year, this last one. This is data taken directly from the California Department of Ed's California Dashboard. As you can see, there's not a huge increase in enrollment or decline from one year to another. There is an increase in, a slight increase in English learners. I, being one of them, do not count for that increase, but do see it. I also see an increase in students with disabilities, and if you know me personally, you'll know why I'm a huge advocate of students with disabilities and why the need to bring them to the forefront of everyday life is extremely important. There is a slight decrease in our Latino population, but everything else is very, very similar from one year to the next. Our Met learning goals are five goals that I'll go over, and what they are and what our students see on a given day. The first one is communication, and it is to be a great communicator, to understand your audience, to write, to read, to speak, to listen, to use technology and artistic expression, to communicate, and to be exposed to another language. The second one is social reasoning, to think like a historian or anthropologist, to see diverse perspectives, to understand social issues, to explore ethics, and to look at issues historically. The third one is qualitative reasoning, to think like a mathematician, to understand numbers, to analyze uncertainty, to comprehend the properties of shapes, and to study how things change over time. The fourth is empirical reasoning, to think like a scientist, to use empirical evidence and a logical process to make decisions and to evaluate hypotheses. It does not reflect specific science content material, but instead can incorporate ideas from physics to sociology to even art history. The last one is personal qualities, to be the best that you can be, to demonstrate respect, responsibility, organization, leadership, and to reflect on your abilities to strive for improvement. We are part of the big picture learning, I know that somebody mentioned big picture earlier. We are part of the big picture learning model, and we live and breathe by the three Rs in that A. Relevance, our students participate in experiential learning through shadow days, informational interviews, and ultimately internships at sites that are of interest to the students. The experience and what they are learning matters to the site and to the student. They are learning firsthand from experts in their field. The work the students do is real work. It's used, and it matters in our community. They take what they learn in the classroom and apply it to real world and vice versa. For example, we have students learning government in the classroom, but we also have students in City Hall interning. We have students just in every, just about in every industry. We don't have a one or two pathway school. We explore everything that our students want to be part of, and we have many pathways. The third one is rigor. It's presented in projects, which some of you have been part of, and I'll get to it in a bit. In projects developed by students, they are authentic, real-world projects. Their mentors depend on them, and it is mutually beneficial, and it is a mutually beneficial partnership. The students meet our ESLSRs, which are our five learning goals that I just went over. They, sorry, they are met through internship project work. The project must be used and needed by the site to be of interest of our students and that site, obviously. Students dive deep into their learning goals through historical research, reading, writing, communicating with people in the field, data collection through qualitative and quantitative, and while continuously working on their personal qualities and ultimately reflecting on their process and results. The last star is relationship, which is the core of our model, and it is to build our community. These communities are advisors, advisor to student, advisory peers to student, mentor to student. Students learn early the importance of working within a community and how having a positive working relationship can help you be successful and grow within our society. Our students learn early on that, that their accountability in a successful working environment depends on what they bring to the community and/or team. The last one up there is assessments, and students are challenged to prove how they have met their five learning goals in a 40-minute presentation four times a year, which several of you have been part of our exhibitions, and thank you all who have participated in those. We invite you guys to continue to come and challenge our students as they, sorry, as they are in front of a panel of peers, mentors, parent guardians, and their advisors. This is data that I pulled from surveys that I gave parents, students, and staff, and as you can see, more than 95% of our, of our community, parents, students, and staff, feel connected one way or another to the staff, to the school, have deep connections. I need to get my water, one second. I do want to highlight something that a parent said. "The Met has been a great school for my child. It has been amazing to see my child grow, not only academically, but also gain real work experience. I feel with the balance between both school and internships, it has made learning fun for my child. Thank you for all that this school has provided for my child." And that's what we do at the Met. It's a true honor to be part of the Met. Areas of growth, we, I do want to point out, this is from the California Dashboard once again, and we have about a nine-point decline, which we are working closely with our current math training specialists, with the staff, with the students, and we see the engagement already. I do want to highlight the 30-point increase in ELA and the increase in English learner. I know that Julian Manuel would be very proud of myself, and I know that my students' parents are very proud with that 24% increase as well. We have maintained in college and career as well as graduation rates. I spoke about projects earlier and our culture, obviously, but I want to, is it okay if I continue? I want to highlight the, how our students have completed over 8,800 documented community service hours this school year so far, and I'm sure there will be more, while also 42% of them are enrolled in college classes at City College. Some of you have also been part of our student-driven cultural events. In November, we had our very first Met Native American History Month celebration. Thank you for those of you who attended. In December, right before the break, we had our Posada. Last week, we had our Black History Month celebration, and our Apida Night is coming up soon. I invite all of you to attend. With that, from my humble heart to yours, I thank you for your time today, and if you have any questions, comments, please let me know.
Thank you so much. I'm going to start with a public comment.
We have one, Michael Woolley.
Hello, my name is Michael Woolley. I am a first-year math teacher here at the Met, but I did my student teaching here last year. I'm here, along with my colleagues, to just support the charter renewal of the Met, and I know I speak on behalf of all my colleagues when I say we love working at the Met. We love the work we do for our students that we serve, the community that we serve, and there's no place that I'd rather be. Thank you for your time.
Board comments, questions? Mr. Benjamin.
Okay, so the Met's not my area, but I work closely with the Met. In the other hat that I wear, I have a Met intern in my office currently, and he's great. You know, as I mentioned before, I love the big picture model, right? So Monday, Wednesday, Friday, you go to school, Tuesday, Thursday, you have an intern. He wants to be a public policy major, so what better place than to work inside of my office at the City Hall? He actually has come in, and he works in my office, and then he works in another office as well now. So he was able to take the skill set he learned inside of our office and go somewhere else. Let me say this too. Again, it's about, I want you all to understand, it's about energy, right, and staffing. And so Eli, right, his advisory counselor does a really good job at providing direction, but then stepping back and allowing him to be accountable and responsible too. So he's in an apparent space, I don't want to divulge too much, but he's preparing his exhibition, which we discussed. And so as a part of being an intern in our office, him wanting to be in public policy, we were able to put together his exhibition and work together, right, to work on that. And so I'm excited for that young student, and I believe you all do a really good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Rhodes.
I'll be quick. You said that we had some students in City Hall, and that's amazing. But we also have some students that actually work in our communications department right here for the district. So City Hall's great, but the district's better. So that being said, I just want to say, you know, the work that you guys have done has been great. I remember a long time ago, before I was on the Board of Education or anything like that, I actually had a Met intern in a, we had a community development company actually that we had, and he was an intern with us while we were redeveloping homes in South Sacramento. And it was very cool to see, on the flip side of it, being a board member now and seeing the work that you guys have done from this lens is beautiful. So thank you guys for your work. Once again, district over City Hall, any day.
Thank you.
Don't worry, Member Rhodes, we have actually three interns here at the district.
We have three at the district and one at facilities with the district.
Yeah, just put that in your slides next time.
And she'll be here to present because your whole annual report is coming from her this year, so.
Awesome. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
All right, so that concludes our section for public hearing. Our future board meetings are right here, March 20th and April 3rd, and do we have a motion to adjourn?